Was it on your Facebook?
No, like you know that's.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Call to order. Vice Chair Evelyn Cullen. I call to order. Vice Chair Evelyn Cullen. Good evening, I call to order the regular meeting of the Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board Number Fifteen for Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is seven P M. Meeting materials, find a monthly archive of handouts and reference materials concerning the Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board Number Fifteen at uh, H T T P S drive Google dot com. Also recordings. Recordings of our board meeting can be found also at H T T P S on YouTube dot com channel backslash U C one D Z J A T K or R six T T N Y I G X five U dash P two W. Rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Remarks should not exceed one minute and thirty seconds and one question per speaker. Additional questions be posted in the chat or email to presenter. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments, questions, etc. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Uh, purpose of our neighborhood board and the neighborhood plan is to increase and ensure effective citizenship participation in the decisions of government. Um, notes, the board may take action on any agenda item as required by the state sunshine law. Specific um, issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on unless added to the agenda. A two-thirds vote, nine out of thirteen member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Adding an item to the agenda, however, is not permitted if, one, the item be added is of reasonable major importance and, two, action on the item by the board will affect a significant number of persons. Determining determination of whether a specific matter may be added to an agenda must be done on a case-by-case basis. Please silence all electronic devices. City monthly reports, first up is Honolulu Fire Department. Okay, next we'll go up to Honolulu Police Department District One.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, hi, I'm Sergeant Higa from District One. Um. Gonna read some stats for you guys, uh, so this month we have two motor ve- two motor vehicle theft reports, uh, as opposed to zero last month. Um, zero burglaries for both months. Um, one theft for this month, uh, zero last month, oh, sorry. One theft this month, uh, four last month, so it went down. Um, zero U M Vs opposed to two last month. U M Vs are of vehicle break-ins unauthorized entry to motor vehicles. Two assaults, zero last month. Um, zero sex assaults opposed to one last month. Um. No graffitis. Two drug cases as opposed to three last month. And twelve motor vehicle collisions compared to last month, uh, fourteen. And yeah. And I guess for our theft, I mean, sorry, our, uh, tip for this month with being that, uh, Christmas and all the holidays are coming up. Maybe you guys can, uh, work on securing your vehicles when you're at the malls, um, don't transfer things from your front of the car to your trunk while at the mall because if people are looking to break into your car, they're gonna see it. Um, and maybe just be more mindful of surroundings when you walk into the cars after you shopping with all your good stuff. That's it.
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online? Seeing none, thank you very much. Honolulu Police Department District Five.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Sergeant Corpus. Along with Lieutenant Yamashiro from District Five. Um, our statistics for the month of October. It's gonna be, um, for aggravated assault, we had four reported, down from eight compared to September. Um, other theft, uh, slightly up from nine, we have nine for October and seven for September. And then, uh, for burglary, um, six for the month of October and then, uh, compared to ten from the previous month, September. Uh, robbery, we had three uh, compared to four. And then, uh, for sex assault, we had, we had four reported for the month of October and then, um, it's about the same amount for September, we had also four reported. And then, uh, for simple assault, we had eleven, down from thirteen from the previous month. Uh, theft where, uh, sorry, I'm sorry, twenty-seven compared to, uh, thirty-two from, um, September. And then, uh, for unauthorized, uh, you, um, entry to a motor vehicle, we had, um, we had the same amount reported from September to, uh, five in October. And then, um, our officers, um, responded to, um, two thousand six hundred seventy, um, calls for service, down from three thousand twenty-two for the month of September. Um, that's the statistics for the month of October. Um. For our safety tip. Uh, just wanna remind everyone um, to make eye contact with drivers before crossing the street. Uh, even when they have the right of way, uh, never assume a driver sees you. Uh, wait for a care announcement such as a full stop or hand signal before stepping into the crosswalk. That's all I have.
Uh, Lieutenant Yamashiro with District Five also. Um, the Honolulu Police Department is asking the community to participate in a survey. We're seeking input from residents to better understand community safety concerns. Evaluate public trust and improve communication and services. So the survey began on the eighth of November, is running till December thirteenth. The responses that you guys provide are are anonymous and will be confidential, so it takes about three to four minutes. And it's approximately thirteen questions that they ask on the survey. You can find the survey on Honolulu P D dot org. The easiest way I've found is you go to the search, the search menu, you type in survey and then you scroll all the way to the bottom, there's gonna be a Q R code that you can scan to participate in the survey. Or there's an area that you can press click here and then you can participate in the survey also. Along with that, we have a Heroes and Helpers, uh, event being held on December sixth at the Target on La Vehana. I believe it starts at eight o'clock in the morning. And lastly, there's also a fireworks buyback program, uh, event gonna be held on Sunday, November twenty-third from nine A M to three P M. That'll be at the Waipahu, um, of Police Academy. And that's about it for now. We'll take any questions, comments or concerns.
Any questions from the board? Lynn?
Lynn Vasquez, can you repeat the, um, survey link, please, again?
So the survey link is gonna be on Honolulu P D dot org, O R G.
I have a, I have a question, Chairperson. Chairperson, I have a question.
Go ahead, Pat.
Um, hi, um, happy holidays, but I wanna share, if we were to start our neighborhood watch around Kalihii. When are we gonna have training or someone from the police department to help us out with the training?
So the neighborhood walk you're talking about, uh, you wanted to do one in Kalihii, the Kalihii area?
Yes, in Kalihipalama, in our area.
I can reach out to the community policing team for that, uh, would be Sergeant Owato or Sergeant Martinez to see if they can coordinate with someone to get that started.
Well, that's great, and then you can go through our chairperson.
Okay, I'll have him email the chairperson.
Thank you. Cards?
Hi, um, this is just about the survey, uh, I uploaded it on Facebook in our Facebook group at Kalihipalama Neighborhood Board Fifteen. I also uploaded it on Kalihipalama Fifteen, which is our Instagram account. So if you wanna take the survey and like just go straight into it, it's on those, um, websites, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for doing that.
Anyone else on the board? Anybody else on the board? Anybody in the community or online? Seeing none. Um. Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Thank you.
Hi, nice to be here. I just have, I announced main breaks from the previous month, but there was four. Uh, on the tenth of October, there was one near twenty-one sixty North King Street. On the twenty-second, there was, um, one near twenty-one nineteen North King Street. On the twenty-fifth of October, there was one near seven-one-seven North Vineyard Boulevard. And on the twenty-seventh, there was one near eighteen nineteen How Street. Excuse me. So just giving the report of the main breaks and our announcement is related to main break updates. So when a main break occurs, the Board of Water, we work quickly to reduce the impact to our customers. And we wanna protect the public safety and restore service. So for the latest updates for on main breaks, generally, these are for four-inch or larger mains. We have information on how repairs are made, you can, and for information of how repairs are made, you can visit our Board of Watersupply dot com slash main breaks. And then, of course, you can also stay informed on Facebook, Nextdoor. And for a larger, more impactful main break, uh, for more impactful main break, so ones that might be, you know, really large and you'll hear in the news, but you can also sign up for it in H N L Alert. But that's just my general announcement.
Thank you, Iris. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Oh, we have a question. From Ken.
Iris, I know this is not Maui, but I know that there was a situation with Maui and Lahaina, and I guess it was selenium or something like that. Um, that was found, I guess, in the water. Reason I'm asking this, is that something that we would have to be worried about? I know that there was some, and I know this year not D O E, but there were some things that happened with D O E and lead in the water, so just, you know, what? Is that something that we should be concerned about from this end?
I have to admit, I haven't been watching the news and I didn't pay attention. But we do test the water often, um. I don't know the exact durations on this, um, but we do send out notices to everyone for your, just your water qualities for every year. But if we did have a hit or some kind of, some kind of contamination, we would definitely notify everybody quickly. And, you know, shut off the source or whatever it is. But, um, in terms of worrying about it, I don't, I, I can't say a certain, I would say not, but let me just bring that back to my communications.
Thank you.
It's selenium, yeah, I think it was selenium.
It was, um, I saw when it happened with, for Lahaina, so I was just wondering like what that was, I know that that is not obviously the silent, but is that something that we have to be worried about here?
Okay, I'll go check out the news and see what it says.
Thank you, Iris.
Thanks.
Anybody else on the board? Oh, go ahead.
My name is Thomas Beck, uh, my question is in regards to uh, you guys sort of print out in regards to cutting back water use by twenty percent. Uh, my question is uh, with that being said though, is that gonna be a permanent thing? And my question is, uh, especially in Kalihii area. We are expanding, um, housing, uh, in Keel Park Terrace and other areas. Uh, Marriage Housing, where they're gonna put in, I think it's like thirty-five hundred units in the last, next ten years. Um, how does the Board of Water Supply? Uh, how are they gonna address that? Because right now, um, um, to the point where we don't, we shut down three, uh, yes, wells already.
To that question, um, I'm gonna have to ask for some follow-up help on this. But just in general, yeah, my understanding is the twenty percent cutback, it's because it's, um, we're having low rainfall and the demands are up there, so we're just asking everyone to cut back. I'll double-check about how long they were, they're asking for this. Um, and in terms of any kind of further development in, say, like you mentioned, Keel Park Terrace or Marriage Housing, I'll ask about that and get back next month.
Thank you. Anybody else in the community or online? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Honolulu Authority for Rapid Transit. Um, Hart Gabby Camacho, she had submitted a report, so she won't be presenting live tonight. And then now we're gonna move on to our presentations. First up would be, um, Serene, Dr. Miku Lenintain, shall we take a minute? Recession to give her time to set up? Are you ready to present?
Check, check, yeah, I think so.
Okay, let's go.
Okay, awesome, and that's my timer. So, aloha, ka ko, everyone, I'm Dr. Miku. And thank you so much for the opportunity to present here this evening. I'll be sharing with you about resilience hubs, sharing a little bit more about the update on the resilience hub learning community. Now, there's a lot and the work that we do is kind of constantly evolving, so this is actually some of my first time sharing some of this with you, so bear with me. There's also a lot of concepts to unpack because this is a new idea, these ideas of resilience hubs. So I'm gonna do my best to tell you a little bit about our current definition of what a resilience hub means, right? We're also gonna try to share a little bit about the idea of coordinated networks, hubs. And if we're really lucky, I'll be able to explain a little bit more about what it means to be a community of practice, which is what our hub learning community is. These are things that I'll try to unpack, but there's also opportunity, I posted it in the chat and Melissa's gonna share, um, for you all, uh, to come to a virtual online meeting tomorrow. And also more opportunities to talk story and just, so just bear with me, receive what, you know, you can take in today and then we'll, we'll unpack it more as we have time. So here we are, Oahu Resilience Hub Learning Community. We are community practice dedicated to supporting the development of resilience hubs on Oahu and connecting the ecosystem of resilience surrounding them. Next slide, please. Okay, so even just stepping back, the definition of resilience itself, this is our working definition. So survive, adapt and thrive regardless of shocks or stresses that come our way, in other words, bounce back better when hard things happen. So this doesn't mean only natural disasters, right? So this can be COVID. Um, it doesn't also even need to be an emergency recognized by city county, it can be something that's happening really local, right, in your community. So it's a little bit broader definition for resilience, so go ahead, keep going, next slide. Uh, we lost a little bit of formatting here, but that's okay. So what is a resilience hub? So this is our current, as of November seventeenth, um, last conversation, working definition of resilience hub. So resilience hub, a gathering site or a group that supports year-round community resilience and during a disruption activates to support a coordinated response. Trying to move away from the idea of resilience hub as just being a physical structure, so they can both be structures or sites, but also resilience hubs can be groups of people. Um, the key is they're not just activating only in emergency, they're, they're going all year round, okay? Um, and then Joe Watt out at Key Project, this is also a nice definition. Six people who care. And the rest is equipment, so. Resilience hub, that's what we got so far. Next slide. Okay, so this is our current working mission of the resilience hub learning community here on Oahu. Um, we are, exist to support individual hubs. Micro networks of hubs, that's hubs as they connect and support to each other, stronger together. And then if they want a regional level, we're gonna try to help support them in kicking that off, a regional level of hubs. So I know it's a lot to unpack, we'll keep going here. We are, um, a joint program hosted by Serene out of Kapilani Community College and then also the Lahui Foundation. We keep going. This is us, so we actually just received some funding, so now we have capacity, you can see some young faces on there, so we're really dedicated to intergenerational learning and bringing next generation onboard. So Attilina and I are the co-coordinators, and then you can see our staff and student leaders here to the right. Next slide. And then we actually have, um, several, uh, cohort, maybe gonna be fifteen strong of resilience core leaders. So once we get hubs up and running, we're gonna try and place student leaders with each of those hubs to increase their capacity. Next slide. Okay, these are our current aims, the last one we actually just added in. So the goal is support hubs by fostering continuous learning, so if you're like, what are we talking about? That's exactly why we exist, to kind of support that. Um, build cross-sector partnerships, we meet every month for virtual island-wide gatherings. Strengthen and coordinate working groups, we'll talk more about those. Um, expand education and outreach, awareness about what hubs are, how they work, how you can start your own hub. Elevate that intergenerational component, youth and a kapuna. Connect hubs to each other, partners, training certifications, resources, and then we've added this, um, build a sense of community and belonging for people that are doing this hub work. Next, please. Okay, this is a, a little bit to unpack, but it's really important, actually. So I'm trying to unpack the difference between our community practice, which is on the left here, and a coordinated network of hubs that are moving as one. So on the left, community practice, our hub learning community, that's us, we help coordinate learning for all of the hubs that wanna be hubs and best practices. If those hubs band together and form a coordinated network that move as one and activate as one, that's what we have on the right. So we're not facilitating that, but we can help create those things if that's something that people want. Next slide. So this unpacks a little bit more, the slide deck will be available, take a, take a look at, but that's one of our key differences is we're not gonna be activating a network of hubs together. The hubs will be doing that and we can support. Um, but there's an awesome model, uh, on Big Island and now in the Koholao region, um, run through Vibrant Hawaii for what a coordinated hub network looks like, so next slide. So those are kind of our two entities right now for Oahu, our, our hub learning community on the left and then Vibrant Hawaii on the right. Big difference between that coordinated network is there, it's kind of top-down, there's one person at the top saying hubs activate, they're doing drills every month. All the hubs are working together, they're getting resources shared together. It's a really strong and powerful model, but you need hubs first. So the hub learning community is gonna help get our individual hubs up and running, connect the dots, and then as they like, we'll actually connect them to these regional entities like Vibrant Hawaii. Okay, and here you can see, so here's just the map. For those that have been following our work, um, a lot of this work on Oahu came out of the Action Fifteen Project with City and County Office of Resiliency. All those little dots there were identified as areas that are, of different sites or groups that might be identified as hubs. So Hub Learning Community, we're gonna serve whole island as these hubs wanna get up and running. And then you can see on the right-hand side, um, Vibrant Hawaii has twelve hubs in, in their network right now, and they're pretty new, they've been going for about a year and they're really starting to go off and running now. Next slide. Okay, so this is our action slide. So for, we've opened it up, the hub learning community is for everybody, people who are in hubs, people who wanna support hubs, people that, um, wanna fund hubs, right? So anyone can join the hub learning community, if you just wanna learn more about hubs, get your hubs going here in Kalihii, um, you can join as a member, um, right away. And again, we meet monthly and we have like a welcome breakout area and orientation, we'll get you started. Um, and then we also have sign up for hubs, but I'll talk about that in a second. Next up. This is what we look like right now, we've just restructured. It's a good time to get involved if you wanna actually make a difference and be part of this. So you can join as a hub, join as a member, but we're also looking for regional leadership to help make decisions, so it's a leadership team across Oahu that's helping decide for the hubs, not us. We're just helping coordinate. And then you can see on the right-hand side, we're gonna, we're working on getting, uh, cultural advisory council, next generation leaders, and then these working groups. Next slide. Okay, here's the working groups. I have number two highlighted, I actually highlighted number one too for you guys. So this is if you're interested in starting a hub or you're part of a hub and you wanna work with hubs across Oahu to take on specific issues, projects, publications. Right now, we have a pretty active working group looking at how does the neighborhood board interact with their hubs? Is it gonna be a PIG that I just learned about, a permitted interaction group? Is it gonna be a subcommittee? Is it gonna be through the neighborhood board commission? So these are conversations that people are having right now and you guys are invited to be part of that, um, and help shape what makes the most sense. So. Uh, well, we're almost done. So if, uh, okay, keep going, next slide. Oh, other direction? Yeah. Oh, these are what are hubs, so we really do exist to serve hubs, so everybody can be part of the, the community. But if you sign up as a hub, these are the things you're gonna get, invitation to our first summit, training, resources, a learning cohort, a student leader and some extra capacity, maybe an intern to support your hub. Keep going. Um, these are the things we have coming up and for two thousand and twenty-six. Um, we'll have some, uh, micro grants available, planning grants for hubs to get going. Um, we're gonna have a webinar series and again, a big summit, um, next up, I think I have. Okay, these are our youth. Uh, next slide, yeah. I'm hoping for Camp Palihua, but we actually might be, be too big for that, so we'll take a look at that, but the goals for our summit is once you have your hubs, we want you to walk away with basic information of being hubs, resources, build that sense of community, you're gonna learn about volunteer management for hubs and next steps if you wanna be part of a network. These are the trainings we have. Uh, we have, we'll be hosting that webinar series, that's actually from the last season. And then we're training on Telegram, so we're trying to attend all of these meetings so that you don't have to and also kind of help be a link, send things out to neighborhood board so we can expand that communication. I think that's almost it, yeah, and we also have office hours on Mondays and Fridays at noon, so you can meet us then or just email me. Last one. Okay, there we go. So I didn't know I had that too many time for questions, but whatever we can do is great.
Thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the board? Any questions from the community or online?
I'm lost, I'm sorry, Lynn Vasquez, neighborhood word, I'm lost, what is hubs, I mean?
What is a resilience hub? Okay, so a resilience hub, it's either a physical building or a group of people that support their community all year round. So, um, programs for kapuna older age adults, houseless homeless community members, um, maybe the group is teaching swim lessons. So it's a group that's meeting and supporting their community. But if there's a disaster.
We do have, uh, lo- a lot of, um, other um, agencies out there similar to what you have over here, so.
So the, the key difference though is if, in a disaster, say it's a group teaching swim lessons, that whole group has a plan to activate in an emergency. And they have, maybe they have their, um, storage containers, um, whatever capacity they're able to operate, no matter how big, how small, they have this emergency response component built into their group.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Go ahead.
Isn't this almost a redundancy of civil defense as well as fire and police? So you would fit in where anything comes in?
Really good question. So is this redundant? All right, what we know about resilience, we need redundancy, we need backups, backups and backups. Usually, what is it, Renee Spain says, uh, emergency response, first responders, tardy to the party, right? So part of what we have to do is be self-sufficient. We're the community piece, basically we fill in the gaps, um, while we're waiting for other help to arrive and have everybody have a plan if we can.
Thank you very much. Mr. Beck?
When you have a disaster, uh, certain, um, agencies have functioned. Um. My question would be who would you be working with specifically? Fire, police or, uh, civil defense, that's basically my question because um, there's certain rules that, um, these agencies have to follow, federal rules, um, as well as, uh, city contracts, so.
Um, so we meet quarterly with Department of Emergency Management, also High EMA, also Office of Economic Resilience and also, um, the City Office, Office of Resilience. So they're all on our advisory committee, so making sure that we're aligning the work that we're doing with hubs to the practices that they're, they're using already. It's just to add, to, to increase our capacity islandwide.
Hart has a comment.
Hi, just quick comment, um, I think, and this is just for clarification for some people. Um, you guys are kind of like the middle ground, so if government is slow to respond, then you guys just help out in any, an event of disaster or prevention. Okay, that's, um, that's a clarification we needed, thank you.
Ken?
Um, this is gonna be very procedural because you mentioned about, you first mentioned about the P I G, you just learned about that, the permitted information group because we're under sunshine. Um, that is, as a formative, that is a, a bear on to itself when it does happen. Do you, are there other neighborhood boards or how they're dealing with that? Because I, I remember when we had, um, the complete count committee when it came to the census and that was hell when it came to just being a chair, trying to bring all that together, talk to members of, you know, the neighborhood board as we could within O I P's rules at the time. And they would not. And they would not let up on sunshine so that we could have a proper accountability of what our actual census was. So therefore we lost out a lot of money. So I'm saying, you know, in sense of something like this, how does that work?
Okay, I'm definitely not the expert on neighborhood boards, but I'm good at bringing people together. So it's the EVA, there's the EVA group that created a PIG. I had never even heard of it. And so that's some of the conversations we're going to have in the working group is hear how that's working for them, what barriers they experienced, or is it working and is they recommend it? So I think those are, that's a perfect question for them in our, in our working group.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, Dr. Miko Lenantine. We're going to move on to our next presenter, the San Island Historic Properties Project by G70, Cody Winchester.
Hello. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name's Koahe Ching. I'm a project architect with G70 and this is my counterpart, Cody Winchester, planner also at G70. We're working on a project in San Island in the state recreation area. We have a few historic properties that we're seeking feedback on that I'm going to talk to you about in a few slides. So next. We're going to talk about the historic significance of San Island really quickly, our project area and our scope, and why we need to have this project now. And what are the options for the treatment of these historic structures? And what are project timeline and opportunities for engagement and community feedback are coming up next? So our team is G70, which we just introduced you, and our client is DLNR, State Parks. So San Island State Park and the engineering division is assisting us in project managing this project. Slide. So this is, if you're familiar with the area, this is San Island State Park. It's about 143 acres, but currently we're only working in the area highlighted in yellow, which is about 43 acres. And I think slide. So I think now I'll give a little bit of a historic overview of the area.
Yeah, thanks a lot. Just do a quick little history lesson, a little background on Sand Island and on these historic properties that we're taking a look at, give a little context of why these are important. So prior to the 20th century, there really was no Sand Island. It was just a small tidal flat called Ka Moku Akuli Kuli. There was no permanent habitation there. Area was used primarily just for fishing and gathering. The park also goes by the name Maoliola, which was named by King Kamehameha III. In the early 1900s, as part of the development of Honolulu Harbor, dredged material was scraped from the bottom of the seafloor and built up around the tidal flat to build an expanded islet. That islet at that time was used temporarily as a quarantine station to screen incoming sailors or communicable diseases. Then in 1916, Sand Island was turned over from territorial management to the military and established as a military reserve. And over the next few decades, the island was developed to support military communications and defense. Next slide, please. So December 7th, 1941, to date, a lot of folks know the Japanese Imperial Navy attacked Oahu's military installations, drawing US into World War II. Throughout the war years, Sand Island served as a major military fortification and port defense site. Island was further expanded with dredging bill in 1944. That new area was developed as a prisoner of war camp for Italian and Japanese prisoners. Following the war, the army gradually relinquished portions of Sand Island back to the territorial government. And in, from 1950s to 1980s, the island transitioned further into civilian uses, including port facilities, postcard base, industrial uses, and a wastewater treatment plant. Many of those remaining military structures were repurposed or demolished. In 1970, community meetings were held to discuss plans for Sand Island as a park. And 140 acres from Sand Island were set aside for a new park space. Okay, next slide, please. So today, the area is a state recreation area, which is part of the State Parks Park System focused on recreation and community uses. And it serves as one of Oahu's largest urban parks and really the only municipal park within State Parks inventory. Today, folks visit the island for picnicking, fishing, paddling, beach access, surfing, softball, and other recreational uses. Next slide. Okay.
Thanks, Cody. So right now, this is phase one of our work. We're looking at several aging World War II era historic structures that were in that yellow area that was on the previous map slides. So in their current condition, they require a little bit of maintenance, upgrades, perhaps some changes. And we're really seeking impact or input from the community about how we should consider the future of these structures. So we're conducting planning and outreach to get feedback from all of you and any park users for what should happen to these structures. Next slide. So these are the structures that I was mentioning. First, in the top right corner, we have the anti-aircraft gun emplacement tower. What is that? Well, currently, most people use it as a shade structure and sit underneath it seeking shade, very hot climate, and use it for maybe fishing. The second structure to the left is the iconic harbor entrance control post tower. It's about a 50-foot tower that used to patrol the harbor area during the World War II era. So also in degraded condition, rusting to some of the structural members. And then to the right, number three, you have the previous cable hut, which in the 1970s was adapted into a play structure or a train. And then its partner companion piece above that, which was previously an air raid shelter that in the 70s, again, when the park was dedicated, was adapted into a train station play feature. And then the last structure that we're seeking feedback on is on the far left. It's a series of magazine and ancillary structures, which are underground, earth-covered areas that currently have a lot of open access and they've become sort of a safety hazard, attracting vandalism and trespassing and things like that. So those are our five structures we're looking at. Slide. Why are we looking at this project right now? Well, most of the historic structures, the integrity of their condition has really degraded and it's become a real health and safety concern. We have a lot of structural spalling and the condition is attracting some hazardous activities. As you can see in the bottom few slides, those are those magazine ancillary structures that have occasional vagrancy, inviting sometimes illicit activities. And so State Parks and DLNR is really trying to make an effort to upgrade these structures. Next slide. Additionally, also, all of these structures are in areas identified for coastal flooding and the inundation zone, also known as the 3.2-foot sea level rise area. So future flooding could impact these structures and further deteriorate them. So we're making the effort to plan for that now, if that's a consideration the community would like to see. Slide. Okay, I'm going to run through these structures a little bit more in depth right now. So that first structure, the anti-aircraft gun emplacement tower, currently used for shade and maybe as a fishing platform. You can kind of see some of those detailed images. There's a lot of concrete spalling, exposing the rebar. That's not good for structure. So it also potentially has a little bit of a falling hazard to grade. So looking at probably fixing that. Next slide. And this is the iconic San Island Harbor Entrance Control Tower. It's currently unused and it's inaccessible. You can see in the middle photo, there used to be a set of wooden stairs that allowed visitors to the park to be able to access the upper area, but is no longer in those condition. Next slide. Third, the cable hut previously was a play structure. You can see what it used to look like in the 70s and its current condition today. Next slide. And then the companion train station, again, some historic photos, the first original structure being in the top-left corner. And then when it was adapted in the 70s and then today's condition. And then lastly, this is the underground magazine ancillary structures that we're hoping at this time to just seal up and prevent access. Next slide.
Yeah, so last year, State Parks contracted Mason Architects to conduct a historical inventory survey of these properties. All of these were evaluated as being eligible contributors to the National Register of Historic Places and found to be historically significant. Next slide. There was also a limited, excuse me, hazardous materials survey that found that none of the sites contained asbestos or PCBs, which are hazardous to human health. However, they did find that all five did contain lead paint. So that would need to be addressed as part of any future plans. Next slide. All right. So now the question is, what do we do? Sorry. Thank you. Okay. We've had some preliminary conversation with folks, done some analysis, and we've come up with five treatment options at this time. And these are what we'd like to gather feedback then from, from the community to see what folks are really interested in. So the first option is restoration. So there's been some interest in maybe restoring these sites back to their original World War II condition. Another option is demolition. Some folks we've talked to have said, you know, we don't like these sites. There might be an ISO or there might be a hazardous, you know, a hazard. So we'd like to just see them go away. Another option is adaptive reuse. So maybe we keep these structures, but adapt them and turn them into a new use that's more suitable for folks' interests today to fit the current vision for the park. A fourth option is relocation. So maybe we move these structures to another location outside of the sea level rise hazard zone. Maybe we elevate them. A fifth option is preservation, or sometimes called mothballing, where really we stabilize these structures, keep them in a safe condition, make them safe, and then preserve them for maybe a future decision-making. Okay, next slide. All right. So this is really why we came to you today. We'd like to get the word out there about future opportunities to provide input on what to do with these structures. So we have two public meetings coming up. The first on December 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We'll be providing some overview of the park, the issues, the nature of these five historic sites, and some preliminary ideas of what to do with them. The second meeting will be on Wednesday, December 17th, same time, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. At that time, we'll have gathered some input and have some preliminary design concepts to share with you folks that again, you can provide further input and finalize what direction we take with this, with these five sites. Next slide, please.
All meetings will be hosted on Zoom, not in person.
All right. As far as next steps, once the conceptual designs are finalized, aiming for end of this year, we then will take that out to BLNR for final review and approval, and eventually looking to implement the design in summer 2026. Next slide. Here's some project information. We have a website online. You can scan that little QR code up in the top right corner and find more information about the project. The community meeting dates are on there, the Zoom dates are on there. And we also have an online survey that folks can take if they'd like to provide input that way. We also have our project email address on there. We can send us any questions you might have. Right. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the community? Go ahead.
My name is Dana Yap. And a few months ago, another group came from San Island, a global preservation initiative. Are you guys working with them or? Because they talked about property on San Island. So that's why I'm wondering if there's a conflict.
No, I'm not aware of what they're doing, but.
Oh, wait, I can get my point from it.
Hi, everybody. Carl Schollen. I'm a planner with State Parks. So working with Group 70 is our contractors. Yeah, with Global Preservation Initiative, we are working with them through our interpretation division. This project isn't, um, isn't directly related, but there is some overlap. We just did an event at Sand Island with them. Saturday? Yeah, on November 8th. So, yeah.
Any more questions online? Okay, seeing none? Okay, go ahead.
Testing. Board Member Pohano, I just want to make a suggestion to probably integrate more cultural, historical information that happens within the islands and the fish ponds that used to be there as well. I think it's Maoliola Kei is a nonprofit organization. So if you guys are in touch with them, that'd be great too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. We have been in touch with Kaua, Kavimani. She's been an excellent partner on this. And just to note on some of the adaptive reuse options that we're looking at could really vary. And community input will be critical in deciding what types of adaptive uses could be appropriate if that was an option pursued. So cultural interpretation could certainly be a part of what we tell the stories. So the stories don't have to be focused just on the World War II history, but could really tell the entire history of, of Sand Island and various layers of history that have taken place here over time. So that's the type of feedback that we'd like to receive. Thank you.
Okay, Ken?
Hi. Hi, thank you. I had a question about, because you were using, there's different, like those terms mean something like restoration, right? So is that for whatever particular site it is per number, what to do with that? Is that how I understand that as opposed to like a blanket type of idea? Is that correct?
Yes, we, ideally, we're looking for kind of what is the community's vision for this space? What type of park area should this be? And how could these sites contribute to that vision, right? So it could be a general preservation for the entire area. The ideas, all five of these should connect together, hopefully in a way also, and help bring that community's vision to life.
So for example, like restoration on like, say, the tower and then like sealing up like the magazine or something like that? That, you know, those would probably be under different, I'm just wondering, you know, how does that work? So is that allowed?
Yes. So each structure can be looked at individually in terms of maybe this structure is, is not in such good condition and maybe we don't want to invest in, yeah, maybe, maybe anti was, thinks one should be demolished and maybe we should restore the tower and maybe one of the other structures should be adapted for a different use, a cultural use, a watching space, a picnic spot. But, but what Cody is alluding to is, is also what State Parks is asking of us as consultants is to work on the whole vision of the park itself. Right now, it lacks a true consolidated vision of what is this people's park? What does that mean to people today? What do you need? What, what is in service of the community? And then how, how does this other work that we're doing with this individual structure support that?
Thank you. Vice Chair Cullen has some comments as well. I've utilized that park many years of my entire life. And I looked at the picture of 1977 to 1981. That was not like so many years and it looked like it needed help again, especially when it came to the tower. I don't know if the LNR has the funds to do these things at this point. I don't think we do have the funds to do that as well as I think San Island Park, the camping area is closed because they have sewer issues. So that to me is more pressing to address. So that to me is more pressing to address that than to, um, I guess to have a, a makeup work to be done on things that people really don't pay any attention to. Um, so I would be one to say to demo it. Because we don't have the money and taxpayers, we don't have the pockets to pay for, for something like that. That's just my two cents. Thank you.
I'll just note that there is, um, this is one phase of a, a larger, um, effort. There will be a master planning process that State Parks will pursue, um, likely starting next year, early next year. And, uh, that'll look at the entire, uh, Sand Island State Recreation Area and address some of those other concerns like camping. Yes.
Oh, um, Chairperson? It's okay, Chairperson. Can I speak?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I thank you. Um, just looking at each individual area, it does bring back a lot of remembrance, too. You know, where the, that train place where we would take the kids and then they'll slide on the slideboard and all those places. So it, it has a lot of historical memories there for the older group, you know, older than sixty-five, seventy. You know, it, it brings back a lot of memories too for us. Um, I, I like restoring the train place because it brought back memories. And where we take our kids there and our grandkids, you know, now we're working with great grandkids. So that's kind of interesting. Um, even a lot of places that I look at, it's, it's fishing areas that we go hand polling. A lot of places there's hand polling that they use, that we used to take our groups out there to go fishing, hand fishing and lay net, you know? A lot of the areas that we used to go lay nets with my husband and stuff. So, um, thank you for letting me look at it. There's a lot that can be demolition too, but I like the restoring of the, the train area and stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
Um, just real quick. So are all the sites already on the historic registry or there, there will, or is that something that you guys are trying for in terms of the different sites?
Maybe jump on that.
Uh, they're currently not listed on the national and state registers of historic places, but, um, but we did have that assessment done. They are potentially eligible. Um, and I think we're currently pursuing, uh, listing. Um, I don't want to misspeak, but, um, but they are potentially eligible. Um, the other honorific that Sand Island has is that the entirety of Sand Island is a, um, is a state monument, um, and under Chapter Six E, which is the Historic Preservation, uh, statute. Um, that, uh, so the language within that statute leaves it a little up to interpretation, specifically what, um, the historic significance of Sand Island is. So, um, this whole process is really designed to engage the community. You know, we can write our own story. We want Kalihii Palama to write, to, to drive the narrative of, of what this place means, both traditionally and also today and how we see it going into the future. Yeah. So, um, as, as one of the planners at State Parks, um, I strive to, um, you know, really take, uh, take public input seriously and not just be making, uh, broad decisions from my desk, right? So, um, so yeah, thank you for the opportunity for, uh, us to present this to you today.
Thank you. And he's just, um, touching base with us because we live down that side. We're from Okoea Street and Sand Island is our playground very much. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Mahalo. Appreciate it.
I, I do have some flyers, uh, with information about the project and, uh, the Q R code for accessing the website. So I can leave these up at the front and everyone's welcome to take one. Thanks, everyone.
Chair, can I make a request? Um, to the board? I think if it's to, um, readjust who presents, then, um, is that it? Yeah. Um, I'm, I'm gonna have to deny that request simply because of all the others that's present to, to present.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah. Okay, so city elected officials, Mayor Rick Blandiardi's representative, Deputy Director Stephen Courtney, Department of Information Technology.
Yeah, good evening to Kalihii Palama Neighborhood Board and members and residents. My name is Stephen Courtney, the mayor's representative and deputy director for the Department of Information Technology. I will start with highlights from the mayor's newsletter for November twenty twenty-five. That link with other information can be found in the chat. Skyline Segment Two opened for service last month, adding five miles and four new stations, including Pearl Harbor and the Daniel K. Enway International Airport. The city's Early Education Center relocates as multi-year repairs begin for the municipal parking structure. New sewer rates go into effect January first, twenty twenty-six for Oahu residents. The new rate structure gives you more control over the price of your monthly bill. To make planning easier, the Department of Environmental Services has created a new sewer bill estimator, which is available by scanning the Q R code in the newsletter. In other news, the Royal Hawaiian Band will hold a free concert. Join us on Friday, November twenty-eighth for the Royal Hawaiian Band's Kalihii Makahouma at the Neil S. Blaisdell Concert Hall, seven P M. This non-ticketed event is free and open to the public. Doors will open at six P M. Seating is on a first come, first served basis. The city and county of Honolulu has a new system for electronic press releases, making it easier for Oahu residents and members of the public to sign up to receive these important updates. As of November fifth, subscribers will start receiving press releases in their inbox through the new system. Information is in the chat. Department of Issues follow-up, we have two issues. The first one, Member Farm and Member Culling requested an all-way crosswalk similar to the ones in Waikiki at the intersection of Kalii Street and North King Street to accommodate the high pedestrian traffic and students. They asked if this intersection is under city or state. D T S responded, "The intersection of Kalii and King Streets falls under the jurisdiction of the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation." And number two, Resident Dale asked why the restrooms at Ala Park were closed. D P R responded, "This issue was investigated on October twentieth by the groundskeeping supervisor." The investigation confirmed that the conference station had been closed due to vandalism. Repairs were completed on October seventeenth, and the conference station is now fully operational and open to the public. If you have an issue with the city to report, please use Honolulu three one one. And H and L dot info is a one-stop shop for updates from the city. That concludes the mayor's report. Mahalo. Are there any questions from the board?
Are there any questions from the board? Ken?
Thank you. Um, thank you, Stephen. I had a question. I, thank you for following up, by the way, on that for the four-way stop. So are you saying that the proper, uh, department is H dot, or the proper agency would be H dot four? Talking to about getting the four-way intersection? That's, that's all we have to go through, not, um, anyone else?
Yes, for that intersection, you would have to go through H dot.
Say, sorry. Is that yes?
But yes, you would have to go through H dot.
Any other board members? Okay, uh, questions from the community or online? Seeing or hearing none? Next up is Councilmember Radiant Cordero.
Hi, Vice Chair Cullen, Neighborhood Board members and neighbors in Kalihii Palama. I hope everyone's doing well and it was great to see, um, Group Seventy here to talk, to talk about the project. Um, I wanna, uh, wish, I hope everyone's doing well. Um, I wanna mahalo everyone who also went to the, uh, different station designs, um, especially to the most recent one at regarding the Eva Lee Station. Um, I saw Vice Chair Cullen there. So, um, we got to provide input there. Uh, so looking forward to future, uh, community events and meetings, um, soon. I do, I will drop my report here in the chat, but I hope that you all receive my report that we dropped off with the N C O today. Um, I do have updates on the first page. You will see over there, uh, that, um, that we do have a crosswalk restoration for Waiakamilo and Kalani Street. Um, and also today in my committee, uh, I asked about certain blacked-out crosswalks, um, one namely by the Kapalama Post Office. And that will be, or if it's not been already restored as well and remarked. Um, I also want to note that, um, in the, our neighborhood, neighborhood areas along, uh, Gulik Avenue, as well as, um, next to it, Kalihii Vaina Neighborhood Park, uh, I put in requests, um, both to parks as well as, um, to H P D as well as the Institute for Human Services.
Radiant, sorry.
Yeah.
We, we're having a little bit of static.
Oh, can you hear me? Is it better?
We can hear you. Could you turn on and off your camera?
Yeah, sure. I'll turn it off. Okay. Is this better?
Okay, it's on our end. Uh, so we'll get that, uh, situated. Can we take a five-minute recess, please?
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess.
Is that P? Like, because I don't want to. After I can tell that my meditation, I'm gonna take rest of the water until you guys want to.
Hello? Yeah, your camera is on.
Yeah, we're just trying to get it.
Hope you said you're leaving. Coming back in.
Hi, Radiant.
Yeah, yeah. I do. Yeah, I do. I remember. Remember, it was like yesterday. Twenty years. No, it seemed awful time.
Are you still a student?
I am.
Good. Good feeling. You ladies used to have school. It's not running well. It's not feel good.
Call to order? Okay, go ahead, Radiant.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cullen. Am I good?
Yes, you are.
Okay, perfect. All right, I'll start over again. Um, I would like to thank everyone who attended different community meetings. Um, one in particular, since I know that Hart wasn't there, was the Eva Lee Station, um, workshop. I saw Vice Chair Cullen there where we were able to offer, uh, certain comments, um, for the station and learn a little bit more about why the design is, why it is the way it is, um, and how they are addressing, um, issues in the area with their designs. Um, so great to see you there. And I do have updates on community concerns. Uh, one, um, in particular is a crosswalk restoration at Waiakamilo and Kalani Street. Next, also on my, on my first page, um, I did make submissions to different city agencies, uh, and they're kind of all in the same area. So, um, one would be for the Gulik Avenue sidewalk concern. So we have the Kalihii Vaina Neighborhood Park, um, for maintenance. Um, I made a request for, uh, regularly scheduled, um, but due to the construction that is occurring there, they said that they are taking up the trash once a day, um, and, uh, cleaning the comfort stations once a day. Um, and I've requested that the parks, um, the park staff determine, um, more frequent cleaning times because we know that the construction will be happening for a long time. And, uh, with that, in addition to that request, um, with, uh, Board Member Josas', um, assistance, uh, we were working with H P D and making requests to H P D, um, for homeless outreach as well as with the Institute for Human Services. Um, I do want to highlight, uh, two, uh, informational updates, um, in our community about the completion of the Dillingham Boulevard Bridge. I know I brought that up last time, but I do want to just highlight that. I know that we talked about it a bunch when it started in the beginning of the year. Just want to say that's pal as of September. And then, uh, for Fern Community Parks, multi-purpose building and that it is, it's expanding it. Um, so I told my mom about it. She went to Fern. She said that basically it looks the same as when she went there, which, you know, my mom was born in nineteen sixty, so pretty, I mean, not, not old, but older. So, um, also I do want to note, uh, especially if there are any non-profit organizations out there or if you work with one, uh, that the city's grants and aid program is going to be accepting applications. And the deadline will be, uh, November twenty-four at two P M. So please be sure to check out the third page of my report, um, and hopefully you have it, uh, because we did drop it off. And, um, next up, I went to my eighth, no wait, eighth, seventh, uh, Kalakaua District Park, um, Costume Contest. Uh, I, I got the opportunity to, uh, be a judge seven times now. So, uh, it's one of my favorite, uh, Halloween, um, events in my district. And, um, I especially like the different agencies, especially, um, H P Ds and some nonprofits, uh, exhibits, or I guess little contributions in the, uh, trick or treat lane. Um, and it's always normally glow-in-the-dark kind. Um, with that, I do want to invite everyone. I do believe, uh, Deputy Director Courtney mentioned this, but But Honolulu City Lights is starting up a little bit earlier this year and it's expanding. As you heard, the opening will be on November twenty-nine with the tree lighting. And the Public Workers Electric Light Parade. I do hope you will be able to come down to check out the trees inside Honolulu, Honolulu Hale. Last year, the city council won its first ever in forty years, tree best in show. First time ever. Normally we don't even get the Kiki choice. So huge shoes to follow into. Our theme is Star Wars. For our trees, so hopefully you'll be able to see it. It is expanding as the early education center. That's atop the parking structure at, at the civics ground is now at Mission Memorial. So the different displays that would normally be right outside Honolulu Hale. Is now expanding towards Thomas Square Park. So hopefully you'll be able to see it there. Shawalah Land is partnering with the city again, just like they did last year. And we'll have more exhibits there, not exhibits, but things for you to see and enjoy. And yeah, that's what I want to highlight right now. But I'm here for any questions and follow-ups. Sorry y'all, not feeling great, but I'm, I'm here and for any questions.
Thank you, Radiant. Any questions from the board? Pat?
Aloha Radiant. Happy holidays. I'm Patricia Hoopee. I want to know, you know that housing by Kahuaiki Village going towards the bus depot? How do they put a crosswalk there? From the housing to the bus depot because there were a couple of people I know that died there. Because there was no crosswalk, but at least two people I know died in that, that area.
Thank you.
Without no crosswalk.
Thank you, thank you Board Member Hoopee. That is a conversation that both the city has been in talks with the State Department of Transportation. I would love to follow up with my colleagues and Director Sniffin about that. But definitely something that we also agree should, should be there. What we were looking at also at the same time was a pedestrian bridge as, as instead of a crosswalk. But we understand even raised cross, I'm sorry. Raised crosswalks would suffice. I just actually had a presentation, Board Member, in my committee today. About how the yield rates have assisted with just having raised crosswalks. So that has actually changed the minds of the city. While the state has already been implementing that. So hopefully we can partner again with even a raised crosswalk there. Because we want to make sure that people are at eye level, yeah? Because that's what's happening.
Thank you, as soon as possible because it hits close to home where it was a nephew that died there. But thank you.
Thank you.
Board Member Diosa?
Hi Radiant. Just wanted to mahalo you and your team, especially Auntie Dee from your office. For not only being quick to respond to my calls and my texts, but also being proactive. It's nice to know that you guys are there on standby when there's an emergency as far as my street and the safety of the kids.
Thank you. Thank you. And Board Member, I hope that we can talk some policy as it relates to some of the issues. Regarding, I guess, people in parks, but during school hours when they should be in school. So looking forward to that.
Any other Board Member? Members of the community? Or online? Thank you very much, Radiant.
Thank you.
Let's go on to Council Member Tyler Dos Santos Tam. Tyler Dos Santos Tam.
I did see Lynn on earlier, but yeah, just, she's not on anymore.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to community concerns.
Aloha, Board Members and Chair Cullen, Patrick Watson. So the first part of my presentation is just appreciation for you folks. Last month, you sent a certificate of appreciation to HPD. And so on behalf of our family, that was my son actually who received that. So really appreciated, you know, our family for just being recognized for what he does in this community. So thank you very much. And I think you guys took pizza or something like that. So I just wanted to appreciate that. That's why I reciprocated today. I brought you guys pizza. But then secondly. I'm going to put on my professional hat now. I work for Honora Consulting. I'm a public information manager. And we are going to be working with Hawaiian dredging, doing the work right outside the door, right up here on the Gulik Overpass. So they're doing the bridge extension work. And so I will be the primary point of contact for you folks moving forward. And it's very preliminary. We're just kind of getting all the stuff in order in terms of that. But I met with the principal just a little while ago, so I'm just trying to make, you know, make that known. I was working with the rail project for a long time with you folks too, you know, as a representative for Kalucho. So yeah, so I'm very familiar with you folks. I feel like family over here. But yeah, so on behalf of my family, back to my son, you know. Last Wednesday, he received a certificate from the mayor at the Kalih Valley Neighborhood Board meeting as well. So thank you very much. And we just love this community. My mom was a teacher at Dole for many years, so. Really appreciate you folks. Mahalo.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So. Of course, I'm the Neighborhood Board Member Lynn Vastwes, Deluserna. Twenty years ago, I started the Slipper Foundation at Merite Housing. So on December seventeenth. It will be my last final event at Merite Housing. And twenty years ago, when I started, I started at Merite Housing and then at the height of it. I gave slippers, clothes and food on all islands to the Kiki and homeless. Children and adults in Hawaii. So on the December seventeenth will be my last event at Merite Housing. And I just wanted to share that here. In Kalih Palama, where I started about eighteen years ago too. So you guys are all invited. And especially to Senator Carros, where I started with him twenty years ago too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ken?
It's a hard act to follow. This is just, just a community announcement. December thirteenth, I was made a bridge that there's going to be a clock hall park. Jim, nine o'clock, from nine o'clock to one P M. There'll be mental health counseling, food, pantry information, shelter, hygiene resources. And not, this is just for this community, but for everybody. So that's something to just be aware of. The main intent behind this is because the way that the federal funding is going, we all need to be prepared. So just, these are some of the resources that are going to be available at that time. So do what you will with it. Right now we're live, so hopefully people can get used to it. Again, it's going to be on December thirteenth. And thank you very much. Also too, just everyone, thank you about the, the four-way. Crosswalk intersection. That's something I will be looking at pursuing, just putting it out there. Thank you.
Pat?
Thank you. I'm Patricia Hoopee. This is directed to Mr. Patrick Watson. I thank you for coming back and giving us feedback in the Kalah, Kalih Palama area about the certificate that your son has received. It would have been nice if whoever gave the certificate, if it was our chairperson, to have done it in our Kalih Palama area. And letting us know on our board for the approval of that certificate. Because she took it to another distance, to Kalih side, Kalih Valley, instead of doing it right here in our home.
Just wanted to comment on that. So at the time, I believe that the certificate was presented. There was some concern about his anonymity, you know, so he had to kind of get some things. Squared away with HPD's District Five in order to do that. So I think at the time, she wasn't really wanting to, you know, put the name out there. But then subsequently, he was invited, I mean, interviewed by Council Member Agitoba on the radio. And so it kind of became obvious who it was. So then they gave him the award at Kalih Valley and they kind of made a bigger deal about it there. But I, I agree, it would have been nice to do it here, but it was just a matter of concern of security at the time, so. Thank you. And he kind of requested that too.
Oh, to have it at Kalih Valley?
No, 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 just to, to remain anonymous.
Anonymous, yeah, yeah, we understand that. Yeah, I, I mean, we're, we're with that anonymous decision, but.
I have a community concern. I have a community concern. I have a community concern.
I'll go next.
The community has to be present. I, the community is here. I'm a community member.
We're still working on Board Members. Excuse me, I just want to put. Order. I believe the Vice Chair is the one that's in control of the meeting at the moment, so.
Okay, I'm waiting my turn.
Thank you very much. And Vice Chair is now at the microphone with the community concern. Aloha Vice Chair Cullen speaking. I would like to raise a concern for the record. Recent K O one interview included statements that suggested board plans or board positions on matters that were never brought before the board. Were not discussed and were not voted on. Many Board Members learned about these items for, for the first time from the interview. For transparency and sunshine law compliance, I want the public record to reflect that the board did not take any official action on those matters. I'm requesting that this topic be placed on next month's agenda for discussion and possible action. Mahalo. That's it.
Thank you so much. We have yet, so can I speak? Can the community speak? Or is it just Board Members?
Any more Board Members?
Community, am I not community too?
Okay, community members now?
I was a community member a long time before you guys was all Board Members. So can I speak now?
Aloha, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Board. My name is Shirley Templow. I'm the State Representative for the area. I just wanted to go back on the request for a bridge on Kahuaiki. I would advise if the board could come together, possibly create a resolution. So we can do a joint effort in having the state and the city work together to come up with solutions and how to make the area safer. Whether it is a bridge or raised crosswalk. If you guys could work amongst yourselves and maybe also Kalih Valley, because we're stronger together when our voices are one. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, yeah, yeah. Next, online? Your turn? Anybody else online? Okay, seeing none? Okay, go ahead.
Hi Lloyd Quano. I just wanted to do a. Community highlight. For the Global Preservation Initiative that just had the cleanup on San Island, November eighth. They were well organized. They had many different groups out there. It was a great thing. The next one is December sixth. I'm not a part of it. I'm just amplifying what they're doing. December sixth, Makapuu. Yeah, check it out if you have time.
Thank you. Dale?
My name is Dana Yap and I'm representing Kalih Business as well as F A C F. This is, I think the Radiant, you forgot the day before. Day before your City Lights Parade is Kalih Valley. And so this is everybody here that should be involved. So, and especially with Diosa can be running. Checking people in. So, yeah, so just want to remind you that next Friday is a big event. And we're looking forward to having all you guys there and having fun, so. Come here.
Just to piggyback off what Mr. Yap said, we will be having our parade next week, Friday. I know it also conflicts with the Royal Hawaiian Band, but just come to ours first. It's going to be fun. We have a paina at Kapalama, run by Metro Church and Teresa Schubert. There's going to be lots of games, prizes, lots of food trucks, who are, who started off in Kalih. It's going to be really fun.
Just to keep the tradition going, because it's been a while since.
Okay, go ahead.
Aloha, my kako. My name is Koma Kairai. I'm a community member. I'm a senior at Wallace-Frankton High School and I just wanted to piggyback off of like what they were saying about the Kalih Business Parade. I'm currently going to be walking in it with a club called PAC, Pacific Asian Affairs Council. And I just want to like also, like from a student's perspective, also encourage you guys to go like check out the Kalih Business Parade. Because it, it truly allows like Kalih organizations and communities to be highlighted. And it's a really good opportunity for everyone here, because it's always good fun.
Thank you. Alright, so now let's move on to state elected officials. Senator Carl Rhodes.
Hi, everyone. Pretty short report tonight. But the first item is really important to me anyway. It's fifty-six million dollars in general obligation bond funds have been released as a cash infusion for the rental housing. Revolving fund for Hawaii Public Housing Authority, Kalei Momi Development, which is Merite Homes. So one of the, one of the, I've been, I've been in office nineteen years now. And when I, I knocked on Lynn Vasquez's door in, what was it, thirteen C or something? Was it thirteen C? Was it C? Alright. Twenty years ago, I've been advocating for redeveloping Merite Homes and making it bigger and better. As many, anybody who's there knows the, the, the current buildings. Well, one of the, one of the things I had to help do years ago was get hot water. But the buildings are in really bad shape and it makes no sense to keep renovating them. So I'm thrilled that we got the money to move forward with the big project. And can't wait to see how it goes. It's, it's so big a project that it's, you know, no, no, things will go wrong. But overall, it's a great, it's a great thing. I've been here, having as Chair of the Judiciary Committee in the Senate, I've been having a series of informational briefings on the rule of law. In relation to recent, recent actions by the Trump administration. Specifically on how his, their decisions are affecting the state. But if you want to take a look at what we've done so far, I think we've done, I can't remember, we've done five or six. We have one more, early December, we haven't set the date, but we'll be on immigration and what ICE is doing here in the islands. And whether, whether it's legal or not, a lot of it, I, I'm an attorney. A lot of the stuff looks illegal to me. But in case, you can take a look at that on the, on any of the briefings we've had already at capital.hawaii.gov. And the videos of the briefings are available on the Senate's YouTube channel via the Live and On Demand video tab on the website. So there's, there are hours and hours of them at this point, but if there's a particular topic you're interested in. One of them, for instance, was the Attorney General coming in and talking about all the lawsuits that the state is involved with against the federal government. At the time, there were twenty-eight. I think it's up to thirty now. A lot of funding would have been cut already if it hadn't been for the fact that we'd gone to court. And say, hey, you can't, the statute says you have to give us the money under those circumstances. So we're, we're winning a lot of them. You never know. They keep getting appealed. But anyways, I'll, I'll stop there. If you want to look at any of that, it's on the, on the website. We're getting ready for next session. If you have bills that you would like to see me introduce, please let me know as soon as you can. And you can get hold of me at five eight six six one three oh, is the phone number, five eight six six one three oh. Or the email is senroads, all one thing, S E N R H O A D S at capital with an O, dot Hawaii dot gov. And first day of session this year is January twenty-one. It's the latest day the session can start under Constitution. Second Wednesday of January, but Thursday happens to be the first this year, so it's really late. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the community or online? Okay, we got two board members.
I'm just real quick, for the people that were interested, were those online or they can look at the, the other briefings you had? Where do they find those?
I'm sorry, so it's on the, it's on the capital.hawaii.gov website. And then on the Senate, on the Senate page, I'm sorry, on the Senate Judiciary Committee's webpage, which is on that website, then look under Live and On Demand video tab. I'm sorry, that's not on the judiciary's website, the judiciary committee's website, that's just on the main website, but on the Senate side.
All right, thank you.
You'll find it eventually. If you have any trouble, let us know.
Cards?
Hi, um, so we, I heard about your announcement that you will be leaving for this legislation, this legislative session. Is this correct?
No, I, I'm not lea, I'm not, I'm not quitting. I'm, I'm just not running for office in 2026. Yes, that rumor is true. I've been, it's been an honor and a privilege. I've been in the House, I was in the House for ten years. I've been in the Senate for nine, and by the time I leave, it'll be ten. And you gotta know when it's time to go and it's time for me to go.
Sorry, I was confused. Mahalo nui.
But I do have one more recession, so I'm not stopping work just yet.
Thank you for, sorry, that was on my end. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks.
We appreciate all the work you've done, Senator. Thank you.
Any questions online? All right, seeing none. Senator Donna Mercado Kim?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. They're not present tonight, but they did send in their reports, so report received. We'll move on to Senator Glenn Wakai.
Aloha. The community's been lucky to have Carl Rhodes in office for the past nineteen years, and I was a pleasure serving with him in the House as well as in the Senate. My report to all of you tonight has a sports theme. Three weeks ago, we had a farewell to Aloha Stadium. We had an all-star lineup of Hawaiian entertainment. There was a fireworks show. There were vignettes, videos of some of the historic moments there. It was a really nice send-off for Aloha Stadium. Stanford Carr, the developer, is ready to dismantle that stadium. He has all the personnel, he has all the equipment. He's just waiting for the city to give him the green light. So if that green light were to be given to him next week, we should be able to see the tear down of the stadium starting before Thanksgiving. Just for your information, the timeline, we will have the stadium demolished by June of next year, and we will have a new stadium built by March of 2029. This is unusual facility for the state, because if he doesn't deliver in March of 2029, he actually pays penalties. In most cases, the state actually rewards developers for delays and what's called change orders. But in this particular case, Stanford Carr will have to deliver all of us a stadium by March of 2029. On another front, I hope all, most of you in the room are UH Athletics fans. I've been able to compel the University of Hawaii to look for Asia in terms of getting athletes, in terms of getting fan base as well as corporate money. As we know, in this age of NIL, name, image, and likeness, we have to pay athletes. The University of Hawaii has very little, if any, funds to pay athletes, so we are looking to get to Asia. We have the most famous kicker in all of America. His name's Konse. I compelled UH to put his name in Kanji on the back. His shirts cannot be printed fast enough. It's never in the bookstore, because it's always sold out. Konse gets a piece of that action. It's a $55 shirt. UH gets money. Everybody is happy with that. I also had the opportunity to work with Spectrum to get the UH football games, the last three home games broadcasted, streaming live and free to the, to Japan. And also, two weeks ago, the University of Hawaii baseball team went to Japan to play Waseda and KOI Universities to, again, start building a fan base there. Moving on to Taiwan after Japan, we're going to Australia and we're going to Korea. So that, this is kind of a long-term plan, probably in the next five years, but hopefully we'll get the money that we're going to need to pay for UH Athletics to be competitive in the future. So that, that's it for my report for this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the community or online? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Representative Daniel Holt?
Aloha, everyone. Aloha, Chair. Aloha, Board members. Mahalo for allowing me to share a brief update on behalf of Representative Daniel Holt, who represents House District Twenty-Eight. Representative Holt is unable to attend this evening, however, he sends his best wishes to everyone. I'd like to share a quick announcement regarding Act 310, the legislature's new $50 million nonprofit grant program, which was created to support organizations impacted by federal funding delays and reductions. Tomorrow, Thursday, November twentieth at nine AM, the legislature will be holding the decision-making hearing for Act 310 in the Capitol Auditorium. The hearing will also be live streamed on YouTube. For your convenience, I've entered the direct link into the chat. From October thirteenth to twenty-fourth, the program received 213 applications from nonprofits statewide across healthcare, human services, education, homelessness, and food security. The Act 310 Evaluation Committee, which includes Representative Holt, Representative Takanouchi, Senator De La Cruz, and Senator Kanuha, has completed its review and will announce the selected organizations during tomorrow's hearing. A press, press release will be going out after the hearing, and will provide a brief overview of the Act 310 Nonprofit Grants Program. This program represents a major investment in stabilizing services that local families rely on, and we encourage community members to tune in tomorrow at nine AM. If there are any questions, I am available. Otherwise, please feel free to contact our office at eight oh eight five eight six six one eight zero, or by email at RepHolt, that's R E P H O L T, at capital.hawaii.gov.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board? Cards?
Hi, Kelly. Nice seeing you. I just have a very curious question. Holt has not had a representative come to our meetings in years. Why is he starting to, why is he now sending a representative now? Just curious.
Well, the Act 310 Nonprofits Grant Program is very, very important, especially in light of the recent federal funding cuts. So he felt that it was very important to send a representative now.
Thank you so much.
Questions from the community? I see none. Representative Shirley Templow?
Hi, good evening, Board and Community. Shirley Templow, State Representative for House District Thirty. That's Kalih, Kalikai, Keahii Lagune, and Hickam Village. I could attest, I haven't been here in a while, and I do apologize, but being a state representative, it is very difficult, and we do only have one session. I'm in one permanent staffer year-round, and we're trying to cover all the various responsibilities we do have. So I do apologize myself for missing the board meetings, and I thank you for your patience, but from the best of my ability, I've been trying to be open and in communication with you all, so I have to put that out there. So tonight, I just wanted to allow my intern, comma, Kailai, to give our report. And I'll be here for any questions and concerns also. Thank you.
Aloha, Ms. Shirley, and then aloha again, Board and community members. My name is Kama Kairai, as you already know from earlier. Like I said, I am a senior at Wallace R. Franklin High School, but I am also a intern for District Thirty under the direction of Ms. Shirley Templow. So I'm just here to give our little brief for what happened in this past month. Um, yes. So here are some things that we did. If you would take a look at the pamphlet I handed out to most of you all at the beginning of the, the beginning of the board meeting. This is our, our monthly newsletter that we give out to community members and community leaders, which briefs about some things that Ms. Shirley and her team have been doing. So if you guys, if you guys just want to take a quick look at that, one thing about the newsletter I would like to highlight is right here on the front. It's a helpful website called FindHelp.org. It's a vast community database, which gives information about resources in local communities to help out its community members. So for example, earlier today, when I used the website, I used my, my zip code, nine six eight one nine, represent. And it gave like hundreds of like helpful, helpful resources, which reigns, ranging from schooling to food resources to health. So that's something very interesting and cool that we wanted to set out to the community. Another thing that we did last month, or yeah, last month, was attend the Kamehameha Lawmakers meeting at Kamehameha Schools Kapalama. At this, at this meeting, we were informed of some projects that Kamehameha Schools was doing. So for example, we got to take like a deeper look into their finances and stuff like that. And we're also informed about the current lawsuit that they are facing under, and what we can do to help support Kamehameha Schools in this time. I got, I personally got to talk with the interim director, Dr. Waale Ale, and she gave me some insight about what Kamehameha Schools was doing. So I think if any of you guys got the opportunity to chat with her or any Board members of Kamehameha Schools, I feel like that'd be very helpful, because as we know, Kamehameha Schools is right in our own backyard. And then, yeah, that's all I have presenting today. So I want to mahalo all of you for allowing me this opportunity to present. Mahalo, Ms. Shirley, for all of the opportunities you've given me so far. Yeah, we will not be taking any community questions or concerns at this time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well done. Any questions from the Board? Questions from the community or online? Thank you very much. Mahalo. Mahalo. Okay, Governor Josh Green's Rep. Representative, Green Kalili, OI Department of Transportation.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm gonna place the link for Governor's November Newsletter in the chat. It is also available on his website, and I think the item of note in this month's issue is going to be some information about SNAP benefits and other resources available to those who are affected, especially by the shutdown of the federal government. And, but beyond the newsletter, I did want to raise a point. So earlier in the discussion, there was a request about safe crossing limits around Kahawiki Village to the Kahawiki Skyline Station and the OTS Kalih Transit Center. And since I've been the Governor's Rep. to this Board, I have sent or have shared, I think DOT's position on that. But I think at this time, since it's come up again, it might be appropriate for us to have like a formal written response from Director Sniffin. So I'll, I'll take that back to him and provide that to you as well as to the Chair. And then of, of course, available for any questions on any state matters or anything for the Governor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Board?
Just a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to mahalo to all the reps and all the elected officials who actually show up to these meetings. It's very important, and it shows a lot of your character. Thank you.
Thank you, Diosa. Anyone else on the Board? I see none. Any questions from the community? Hey, Mr. Beck?
My name is Mr. Beck. It's in regards to what's happening with I guess the speed cameras that they have. Part of it is Sniffin is not an elected official. He's running this camera. Basically, it started years back initially to control speeding, people going through red lights, and it blew up basically because of challenges. My concern is this. They still don't know the way to answer the question I called them in regards to how you challenge it. If you get a ticket, because it already came in the paper, some people are getting their notification six months later. Under the current laws in regards to challenging a ticket, there are certain requirements. I don't know how it's gonna, how they're gonna come to some kind of, I guess, how to solve this problem. But I believe part of the process that I'm worried about is where the cameras located in our area, especially where we have one area that goes from thirty, twenty-five miles an hour, you know, you're coming off the freeway at fifty, or actually forty-five, you go to twenty-five, and you go back to thirty-five. I don't know how they're gonna figure that out, because School Street supposedly is a cutoff point. They've never told me one way or another, how are they gonna determine that? They said the police basically are gonna be looking at it and determine what they'll go through and the process on the police running shot. They can't answer how long that's gonna take. I understand why it exists. We need it. There's no doubt about it. But the part is, everybody's entitled to to question what they're doing and the process of it. I have no, I have, I believe that that's because they had to delay it. They had a problem. Thank you.
Um, Chair, I, I do, I can offer a response. All the information to address the questions are either set out on the Hawaii DOT website or it's set out in the statute. And I don't have the member of the community who just spoke's contact information, but if there's a way, Vice Chair, for you to connect the two of us, I can provide the responses to his inquiries.
Um, I will provide it to you. I'll get it from Mr. Beck, and then we'll forward that to you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lynn?
I was wondering, I got a ticket, but I know I'm not guilty, so, because I had to use the bathroom. There was a, there was a, there was a bad traffic last week, Friday. I mean, it took me over an hour to get to home, and on School Street and by Leaky Leaky, I had to use the bathroom, and I had, there was a red light, I was right in the middle, and I, I pressed the pedal, because I was, I had to use the bathroom. I'm sickly. So I know I'm gonna get a ticket, but how can I, you know, when you get a chance to go tell the court that you have a valid excuse, who do I tell a valid excuse when they're gonna give me a ticket? I need to fight that. I'm gonna, I wanna fight that. Where do I go? Yeah.
So if you received a citation from either a speed camera or a red light running camera, in the citation, there are instructions on due process.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hi, where can we find the data to show how you determine where to put the cameras? I'm wondering why there are majority cameras in Kalih?
So the selected intersections were based on high incidences of crashes and serious injuries.
Do you guys also do data about like the density of population in each area?
So the enabling legislation specified that the first ten, remember, it started as red light running cameras. So the legislation specified it had to be in Honagulu. And so that limited the options, and from there, the department selected the intersections that had the highest rates of crashes.
Is there public access to that data? You have it? Never mind.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to Board Business. So we have several resolutions to take a look at. Okay, so motion is made. I'm sorry, excuse me. So here are the resolutions. The first one is Pro City Resolution Supporting the Recommendations of the Hawaii Injury Prevention Plan and Hawaii Water Safety Plan. This reso is to help prevent drownings in the state of Hawaii. Next is the Cards-Pintor Resolution, Holocart Tap Pay. Cards-Pintor Resolution, amend state constitution that slavery and involuntary servitude is prohibited. And Cards-Pintor's urging for more remote and hybrid jobs for the state and city government. Okay, so for first on the Pro City Resolution, um we don't have anything. Okay, we'll defer that one. Okay, let's move on to the next one. Cards-Pintor-HoloCard.
Hi, so this resolution is very simple. Do you know how you guys use Apple Pay or Google Pay to pay some things off? This resolution is just introducing that we use the HoloCard and the University of Manoa One Card to be used for Apple Pay and Google Pay. That's just as simple as that. That's the resolution.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion?
Second. Um second by um Vasquez, Board Member Vasquez.
Okay, okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Um when I call your name, please state your vote. Evelyn Cullen?
Aye.
Deosa?
Yes.
Member Ken Farm left. Um Donald Guerrero? Donald? I see you online.
Donald?
Hi.
Okay, I'll I'll go back to. Um Pat Hopi? Randy, sorry, can you just mute yourself and um state your vote? Unmute, I mean, sorry.
I vote aye.
Thank you. Eric Mitomora is not here. Willis Moore? Cards?
Aye.
Lloyd Pohano? Vanji Tolati is not here. Lynn Vasquez? And Amanda's not here. Seven ayes, one no, zero abstain, motion adopted. All right, so the next one by Cards-Pintor.
So um in the United States Constitution, there is the um let me pull this up one more time. Sorry, I need to get my script. Thank you. So the Thirteenth Amendment is basically the United States Constitution and it states that neither slavery nor its uh involuntary servitude, except as a punishment for crime where the party has uh parties shall have been duly convicted, shall exist within the United States or any place subject to their jurisdiction. So what this means is slavery and invol- uh involuntary servitude is banned, except as a prime for uh uh as except as a punishment for crime. So what that means is it's based off the state's uh state constitution to see if uh to see if slavery is technically banned or not via um set uh via on if they per uh if they were persecuted for any crime. So because of this, this leads to very unfair minimum wage for uh incarcerated uh folks. Um so in the stats in the resolution, um majority of the uh people that are overrepresented in the prison system is native Hawaiian or Pacific Islander. And what we found out was sixty-three percent of male inmates and fifty-six percent of female inmates reported having a child. Um every hour that they make, they only make around twenty-five to two dollars and fifty cents. Twenty-five cents to two dollar and fifty cents an hour without deductions. So this resolution is to implement this into the state constitution and it would give them uh ability to be paid uh minimum wage. So, yeah.
Make a motion to.
Who's second? Okay, second.
Do you roll call vote? Evelyn Cullen? Yeah, discussion. Oh, you can, yeah, you can have discussion.
Go ahead. Motion, wait, did you motion to discuss or motion to vote? Um uh Deosa? Okay, motion?
No, you can do discussion after.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh this is high blown. I think it's not the business of the Neighborhood Board in any way, shape, or form to discuss the Thirteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and then try to bend it around. Um by the way, in full disclosure, I teach at Halawa Correctional Facility currently. I'll be there in eight hours. So I'm thinking that this motion really is out of order. But the least we should do is vote it down. Uh it it really doesn't have any business in the Neighborhood Board.
I understand uh the pushback. Um and I will say that the Neighborhood Board does have a place. They are they have the ability to very make any resolution that they want regarding the state, regarding the city, regarding um sorry, yeah. So because of that, um I feel that it is at least our right as uh board members to create any type of resolution that we want that is um that is gonna be put forward and should be able to be discussed. Um and in terms of how it works for the U.S. Constitution, um I am not trying to challenge the United States Constitution. I am trying to amend the state's constitution so that it is focused on state matters and Hawaii matters and um anything that happens in Kalii Palama might be happening in other places in Hawaii. So, yes, that's all.
Thank you. We have um Randy online.
Uh yeah, sorry, I was just gonna agree with Cards here. I think as a political body, it's we can express whatever opinions we want about any matter whatsoever, whether that's the United States Constitution or not. I happen to disagree with this motion, but I think it's perfectly proper if Cards wants to bring it to a vote to board.
Chair, may I make a suggestion? Can we defer this since we are crunching on time?
Go ahead. Okay, let's vote on this. Okay, go ahead. Evelyn Cullen?
All abstained.
Deosa?
Sen.
Sorry, abstained. Thank you. Ken Farm is not here. Donald Guerrero? I don't see him. Pat Hopi? Randy?
Uh I vote no.
Eric Mitomora is not here. Willis Moore? Cards?
Aye.
Lloyd? Vanji's not here. Lynn? Amanda's not here. One aye, four no's, and three abstain. Motion not adopted. All right, next um resolution. Cards-Pintor?
This one's also simple. Um this is just um urging the state and the city to have more work-from-home opportunities. This will, in my opinion, will give more job opportunities for the disability community. That's all. Thank you.
Motion?
Motion to to discuss.
To discuss?
Take a motion, we have to second it, then you can discuss it. No, take a motion. For a second, then you have discussion. We don't have a motion. Nobody has made a motion. Take a motion.
Okay, we don't have a motion, so then we do. We have a motion.
Uh I think this is a great resolution. I think it can be fleshed out a little more because it would speak to like a broader idea of more remote jobs, I guess, for Hawaii and the people of Hawaii if they wanna like go away from. There's a bigger picture with this from like from a cultural and economic perspective. Like more data for this will help strengthen it, but it's a great idea.
Okay, and I'll keep that in mind. Um if anyone wants to defer or make amendments, I'll I'll definitely. Second. Um moved by Moore and then seconded by, we can do Deosa.
So defer to next agenda. All right, so Vice Chair announcements. Uh I wanted to do before I started, I wanted to add in to the um to this, um adding the removal item to the agenda. So before we um move any forward, I wanted to um add the removal item to the agenda to remove our chair based upon um her unilateral decisions made by her on our behalf of the board on more than one occasions.
I second.
Open for discussion? Harry Dunn, do we move towards voting now? No comments? Discussion?
Um you're asking to add this to the agenda for January, correct?
Um I'm asking to adjan- um to add it now.
You're asking to do a vote now to remove the chair?
Yes.
Okay, I I keep my second.
Point of order, do we have a quorum?
Yes.
At this point?
Yes, because.
Well, there's somebody that you keep calling who doesn't respond. So let's don't count somebody who's not talking.
So if um so if it's just Donald that's gone, how much for, let let's just say Donald's gone, how many uh board members do we have left?
That leaves eight, if you can count.
We still reach quorum or no quorum?
We have one online, so there's nine. I didn't hear you.
Quorum is seven. We can count.
All right, so let's vote. Evelyn?
Aye.
Deosa?
Yes.
Ken left. Donald, one more time? No. Pat? Randy?
Aye.
Eric is not here. Mr. Moore? Cards?
Aye.
Lloyd? Vanji's not here. Lynn? Amanda's not here. One, two, three. Five ayes, one no, two abstain, motion not adopted. So does this mean that we can put it on in January's agenda? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on. All right, so the next thing that um Vice Chair's announcement is to a second, okay. Um clarification on the certificate presentation that was given by our chair in October of twenty twenty-five's um Neighborhood Board meeting. Um so last month, a certificate was issued on behalf of the board without it being on the agenda for transparency. We're not, we're noting that now. And we'll ensure any future recognitions are brought to the board ahead of time. This is just to follow sunshine law. All right, next is a reminder, board members to send their bio and photo to the NCO office as soon as possible. Bio is limited to five hundred words or less and contact you'd be willing to share as it will be posted on the website. We have elections of
Madam Chair, this is for our person. I've seen that but not been able to fill it in. So cannot send information the way I got it in my computer. I don't know. You know, we need to start this all over again. That email was what, two months ago? And it was supposedly a document that could be filled in and it's not. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Pat.
Um just looking over this bio thing, is it a voluntary statement of our of our thing or do we have to do it?
Voluntary.
Okay, ten-four. Thank you.
Anybody online? Okay, let's move on. Um let's see. Elections of officers to serve from November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. We have a sec- second vice chair position or treasurer. Shall we work on this now or should we defer it? January, okay, we'll defer that. Um approval of minutes?
Second.
It's about the election. We're um with this removing the vote, the one we just took to January as well. Okay, just wanted to clarify.
All right, now we will be going into um community. Excuse me, sorry. Okay, approval of the minutes. It was Vasquez?
Second.
Deosa? Any edits or discussion? Accepted. All ayes? No no's, any abstains? Thank you. Okay, so now we're gonna move to committees. We wanna establish our committees. All right, go ahead, Cards.
I would like to make a motion to um establish the committees that we had since Ju- July. Um we have the Health of Coordination, Homelessness, um Education and Safety. Uh are those the committees we all want, all four of those? And the respective chairs of um Co-Chairs for Educa- uh Education, uh ma- Board Member May and Board Member Pintor. Uh Outreach and Coordination, Chair Pintor. Chair for uh home uh homelessness, Lynn Vasquez. And um Committee for uh Safety, uh Ev- uh Chair uh Cullen. I make that motion?
Second. Okay, Community Resources. Governor Josh Green recently announced new coordinated state actions. Sorry, are you gonna vote?
Motion to vote, motion to vote.
Let's vote. Evelyn?
Yes.
Deosa?
Yes.
Ken is not here. Donald, one more time, no. Pat? Randy?
Yes.
Eric is not here. Mr. Moore? Cards?
Aye.
Lloyd? Vanji's not here. Lynn? Amanda, thank you. Okay, now on to Community Resources. Governor Josh Green's recently announced new coordinated state actions to protect Hawaii families from the impacts of the ongoing federal government shutdown, um which is now reopened. Um but they continue to provide um supplemental nutrition assistance programs. It's called Expanded Relief and Family Assistance. Sign up is through Catholic Charities. You can go and check out um Catholic Charities on their website or call eight oh eight five two one four three five seven. Um press one for financial assistance and one for HRP, or you can visit them on their websites. Go ahead.
Um.
Going back to commi- Going back to community reports?
Yes, I have one report. We will be participating in the Kalii Christmas Parade, as mentioned. We also, I also was able to get in contact with Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos-Tom, who will help us fund our banner for Neighborhood Board. So we are still getting that in creation. That is my report for the Outreach and Coordination Committee.
Thank you. Okay, so secondly, staff application assistance for senior food box programs. Go to Hawaii Food Bank website, Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, senior coupons, Farmers Market Organized Food Bank, along with the SAT, OCS, and Department of A. Eligible seniors can apply to receive up to fifty dollars worth of coupons to use at their farmers markets. Announcement, parades, Kalii Palama on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Meet at Kalii Union Church at four P.M. Honolulu City Light Parade the following day on November twenty-ninth. Meet at three forty-five at Ala Park. Look for our Neighborhood Banner, sign at both parades. Palama Sediment has a free Christmas celebration for the whole family on the nineteenth of December from four to eight, free food, free entertainment, and gifts for kids up to age twelve. Next Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board meeting will meet in January on the twenty-first, seven P.M. Right here at Kalii Waiana Elementary School Library. Kalii Palama Neighborhood Board fifteen recording can be seen on Olelo Channel Forty-nine or at olelo.org live at the following times, first Monday of each month at nine P.M. And second and fourth Thursday of each month at eleven A.M. Meeting adjourned.